Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November the 4th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the Reverend David Morris if he would come forward and lead us in an invocation. Reverend Morris, it's always a pleasure to see you here, and we appreciate you doing this for many times before our board.
Thank you Chairman Woodard, and thank you all on behalf of the North Dare Ministerial Association's members for inviting us to be here with you in this way. Will you pray with me? Spirit of life and love, God of many names, source of all, we give thanks this morning for the gift of life and for the gift of living here. We know our good fortune to live where so many people spend their precious free time, and we know at the same time that our home, like every other place in the world, has struggles alongside its sweetness, especially for those with fewer resources and more vulnerability. We know we are called as a community to lift each other up. This morning, we ask and we offer a blessing for all those who give their time, skill, and energy to the work of Dare County: elected officials, staff, and volunteers; for all those who prove every day that a good government is one that enhances the lives of ordinary people. We give thanks today for the gift and the sacred responsibility of our democratic society to govern ourselves, to make our own decisions as a people together. All of you here and those aspiring to serve as you do are simply citizens yourselves chosen freely and fairly by your fellow citizens of Dare County. And so, on this election Day Eve, as witnessed the trucks in the parking lot preparing, I lift up in particular those many people assisting Americans in casting our votes here in our county and all around our nation. They have served our democracy faithfully through early voting, and they will again on a very long day tomorrow. May our election workers be granted wisdom and patience. May they receive the respect and goodwill they deserve as they seek to meet the needs of all voters. Dear one, the many faiths of the world and all voices of reason and compassion call us to live together in harmony. We are called to be faithful stewards of the air, the water, and the land. We are called to delight in the diversity of creation and of the human family, to welcome the stranger, to know them as our neighbors. As Jesus said using words of the prophet Isaiah, we are called to bring good news to the poor, to proclaim release to the captives, to set the oppressed free. Spirit of life, help our elected leaders and all of us here to remember that even the seemingly everyday business of decision-making for our county has profound effects on the people of our community, both now and far into the future. May we all be faithful to our highest call in everything we do. We ask this in the name of that which each of us here holds holy and sacred, in the name that each of us calls in our own hearts in this moment. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Morris. May we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you County Manager. Commissioner House always teases me about, sometimes I get a little lengthy with Chairman's comments, so I'm gonna apologize to him today because I'm gonna be long today, brother.
No worries, no worries.
Young man in Manio, Scout Marcus Simmons. Most of you know her as Mueller Chrissy Simmons. She's an attorney in Manio. He's a young man in the Scouts that really works hard in his community, and he came up, he's trying to earn a merit badge, so he came up with the idea of cleaning up the rain garden at the middle school. And he got all the volunteers to come out, and it was, it was pretty horrible shape. Matt's got some photos. It's like a before and after photo. He'll show the rain garden at Manio Middle School, a before picture of what it looked like prior to Marcus. You can see how overgrown it is in the pathway there, wooden pathways rotten, and so they, he, they did this Saturday, really worked hard. Look at the difference. And that's a new boardwalk as well. So my hat's off to Marcus and him getting the folks in Manio to do this and clean it up because it was, certainly wasn't functional prior to him, and my hat's off to Marcus for that work that he's done in the community. So, thank you Marcus. If you're listening today, we certainly appreciate all of your efforts. This morning is gonna be a little difficult for me. It's gonna be tough for me this morning from what I'm about to talk to you about. We've got three board members who are leaving the board. This is their last meeting. First is Commissioner Bassnight. I want to take a minute to recognize and celebrate one of Dare County's most dedicated and passionate public servants, and that's Bee Bassnight. She has served on the Dare County Board of Commissioners for the past year, and it's truly hard to express in just a few minutes the immense impact she's had in this community over the years. I'm gonna try to do my best Bee for you, but Commissioner Bassnight, she may have only served on this board for the past year, but her commitment to the people of Dare County over the past several decades has been nothing short of extraordinary. In addition to serving this community as a school teacher for some 35 years, she also served on the Dare County Board of Education for 12 years, four of which she served as the chairperson. She's always had a special place in her heart for our local students. She's worked tirelessly to ensure that our young people have access to the best educational opportunities possible. She has advocated for the resources, support, and programs that allow them to thrive, and her unwavering dedication to our school and students is evident in all of her efforts. I can remember as Chair, she would constantly bug us about supplements. We gotta get supplements for the teachers. We gotta get supplements for the teachers. Fortunately, she was on this board this past year, where we, she was able to support $1.6 million in supplements for our teachers. Your efforts paid off Bee. Whether it was addressing the challenges facing our school system or making tough decisions in the best interest of our residents, she's been a steady, compassionate, and thoughtful leader. She's never backed down from hard work. She's always approached each issue with a deep understanding of what it means to serve. Her passion for education and the future of our children is second to none, and it's truly unparalleled. Beyond her hard work in education, Bee contributed as a county commissioner over the past year has also been invaluable. She has worked on so many important issues, all with a high level of commitment, dedication, and care that she's been, become known for. Her leadership has certainly helped shape the county in ways that will benefit citizens of generations to come. She has dedicated her time, energy, effort, expertise to numerous boards and committees through which she has made a lasting impact on our community. She currently serves on the Dare County Library Board, the Dare County ABC Board, and the Dare County Older Adult Services Advisory Council, where she has worked diligently to improve resources and services for our residents. Her passion for public service is also demonstrated by her volunteer involvement with several other community organizations over the years, including the Dare Arts Council, the Roanoke Island Historical Association, the Hands of Hope Advisory Board, and the Virginia S. Tillot Community Center Advisory Board, where she has continued her decade-long commitment to enhancing the lives of people across Dare County. Through these various roles, she has made a profound and lasting impact on the citizens of the community she has called home since 1973. Bee, as you transition from this chapter of public service to the next, I wish you nothing but the best. On behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, as well as the citizens of Dare County, thank you for your remarkable service. My dear friend Bee Bassnight, will you? Sorry, folks, but Bee and saying have become dear friends of mine, and I love her to death. She's a remarkable human being. Certificate of appreciation, Commissioner Bee Bassnight, in grateful recognition of your exceptional dedication and service to the Dare County community. As a 35-year educator and 12-year member of the Board of Education, you have tirelessly championed local students and advocated for educational excellence. Additionally, you have served as Dare County Commissioner and involvement with several boards and committees, including the Dare County Library, ABC Board, Older Adult Service Advisory Council. This reflects your deep commitment to the well-being of our citizens. Your unwavering dedication and education to public service has left a lasting legacy that will continue to benefit Dare County to generations to come. Dare County Board of Commissioners salute you for your service, and I've signed it effective 11/4/2024. God bless you. I got two more of these to get through. It's gonna be tough, I tell you. My man Couch, my man Danny. I also have the honor of recognizing Commissioner Couch for his service on this board. After eight years of dedicated public service to Dare County in his particular role as county commissioner, he's been dedicated public servant for over three decades. This includes serving on the Board of Education as well as Commissioner Bassnight, and a variety of volunteer services with numerous local organizations and several boards and committees, including the Dare County Waterways Commission, Dare County Children and Youth Partnership, Board of Directors of the Fettison Center, Advisory Board, and the Friends of the Graveyard of the Atlantic Museum. Commissioner Couch, as you prepare to close the chapter of your career, I want to take a moment to reflect on your remarkable contributions to our community, especially the people in Hatteras Island for whom you have been a staunch advocate and provided such strong support. Folks, Commissioner Couch, lifelong Hatteras Island Islander, and throughout the eight years that he served on the Dare County Board of Commissioner, he's always worked diligently to ensure that any issue affecting the people of Hatteras Island are brought to light so they can be addressed, and to ensure the voices of those who live and work on Hatteras Island are heard. As most of you know, Danny's a staunch historian. I always relished his comments, under Commissioner's comments, about different things in our, in the history of Dare County, and I just always enjoyed those Danny, those comments that you made during your time as Commissioner. Andy has truly exemplified what means to be dedicated public service. His passion and commitment to the residents of Hatteras Island has been unwavering. He's also been a voice of his constituents, ensuring that their concerns and needs are heard in the county level and beyond. His ability to effectively represent matters that are so important to his community has made a significant difference in lives of so many, so many people, not only in Dare County but Hatteras Island. Commissioner Couch, I would truly be remiss if I didn't point out one particular area where your remarkable leadership and your dedication to serve Dare County's residents, property owners, and businesses has been truly evident, and that your efforts over the past several months to restore the Buxton formerly-used defense site to its status as one of the beaches, best beaches in America. Your tireless efforts Danny, to advocate for the expedited cleanup of this site has been instrumental in affecting real change. Commissioner Couch was right there with myself, County Manager, Vice Chairman, in Washington, DC lobbying our legislators. It's been a couple of years now, I guess, that we were up there lobbying for that when, when the folks were having so much trouble down there. I truly believe that without your passion for Hatteras Island and dedication to addressing the issues, we would not be seeing the progress that's currently underway by the Army Corps of Engineers to remediate this site. Through your advocacy, you have helped to ensure that the safety and well-being of our citizens and the environment have been prioritized. Your dedication to this issue demonstrates your commitment not only to Hatteras Island but to the entire Dare County community, as well as in hundreds of thousands of folks who visit Cape Hatteras National Seashore each year. Your passion for public service and your love for Hatteras Island are evident in every single thing that you do for this community. In addition to your work on Buxton formerly-used defense site, you have been instrumental in advocating for beach nourishment projects on Hatteras Island, particularly in Avon, which underwent its first nourishment in 2022. This crucial initiative not only protects the island's fragile infrastructure and ensures members of the community are not cut off from essential services during flood and storm events. It also enhances the natural beauty, recreational opportunities that attract both residents and visitors, ensuring long-term vitality to this cherished community for years to come. Commissioner Couch, additionally, your work with the nonprofit Forest Flight Society has been instrumental in promoting National Aviation Day, which celebrates the remarkable contributions of the Wright Brothers and their sister Catherine, and in ensuring that their legacy continues to inspire for generations to come. As you transition from your role as Dare County Commissioner into your well-deserved retirement, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation for everything you've done for the people of Dare County. Your positive impact on the community will be felt for years to come, and you leave behind a legacy of dedication, integrity, and public service that we all incredibly grateful for. On behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners and all of the residents you have served so faithfully over the years, I want to personally thank you Danny, and I also want to personally thank you for your friendship. We wish you the best in your next endeavor, and we want you to know that you will always be an important part of the Dare County community when you meet me down front. No matter what time of day, what day of the week, this big guy would take my phone call, and I would take his. I'm gonna truly miss you Danny. You're one hell of a man. Appreciate you too. On behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, in grateful recognition of your outstanding dedication and service to the Dare County community, particularly Hatteras Island as a Dare County Commissioner for the past eight years, through your leadership in advocating for essential projects such as the remediation of Buxton formerly-used defense site and beach nourishment in the village of Avon in Buxton, as well as your work with numerous boards and committees, including the Dare County Waterways Commission, Dare County Children and Youth Partnership Board of Directors and the Fettison Center Advisory Board, you have made a lasting impact on the residents and visitors of Dare County. Your unparalleled passion preserving unique history, culture, and well-being of this community serves as exemplary of your efforts and will leave a lasting legacy for generations to come. It's signed by me. But what I want you to do right now is turn around and look at that screen. Turn around and look at that screen.
Oh my God, man.
The Fettison Center Gymnasium is now known as the Danny, Daniel C. Danny Couch Gymnasium, and this was unanimous by our Board of Commissioners.
Wow. That'll cut down on a crappy phone call. Thank you so much. That is amazing. That's mind-blowing. My mother-in-law appreciates it too. Give me some leverage with her.
I love it. God bless you. I love you. Folks, last but certainly not least, my right-hand man, Vice Chairman Wiley Overman. Unfortunately, he's not able to be with us this morning. Spoke to him yesterday a couple of times. I've been talking to him every day a couple of times. He's in the hospital in Greenville, and I'd like to ask each of you to keep him in your thoughts and prayers as he's battling a medical situation that we certainly hope will get remedied very, very soon. But I reached out to him yesterday and said, Wiley, if they're not working on you, I sure hope you can tune in.
He is.
He is? Hey, bro. We love you. We miss you. I had the privilege and the honor of a truly remarkable leader, an incredible public servant, and most importantly, a dear, dear friend. Vice Chairman Overman has served on the Dare County Board of Commissioners since 2013. Just came on board just a year after I had been elected in 2012, and is Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman under my, under my chairmanship since 2014. He concludes his time on this board. I want to take a few moments to reflect on his legacy and the impacts he has made on our community. His dedication to the people of Dare County over the past decade has been truly inspiring. His commitment to improving the lives of others has always been at the heart of his efforts. Perhaps one of the most profound areas where Vice Chairman Overman has made a tangible difference is through his work as co-chair of the Saving Lives Task Force. His leadership and compassion in tackling the opioid crisis and supporting those affected by substance use disorder have been instrumental in providing resources, hope, and a pathway to recovery for individuals and families across our community. He was instrumental in Dare County's acquisition of the new Mobile Recovery Support Unit, which we recently unveiled and dedicated in his honor. The Mobile Recovery Support Unit will make an incredible difference for those in our rural communities who are struggling with substance abuse issues. This vital resource will bring life-saving support directly to individuals in need, providing access to essential services and the opportunity for recovery that has the power to transform and ultimately even save lives. Vice Chairman, your dedication to combating substance in our community is, has undoubtedly served, saved lives, and your extensive efforts have given countless individuals and their families a second chance, a renewed sense of hope, a chance at significantly being better. Throughout your public service on the Dare County Board of Commissioners and the various other committees on which you have served, you have shown an unwavering commitment to ensure that no one in Dare County is ever left behind. Your diligent work and dedication have extended well beyond the walls of this boardroom that we sit in here today, and to connect them with the help they need in a very real way. You have made a huge difference, and the profound impact of your efforts will be felt by the community long after your term as Vice Chairman has ended. In addition to your passion for helping those in our community who are dealing with substance abuse use issues through the service, through your service on the Saving Lives Task Force and the Health and Human Services Board, Vice Chairman also serves on several other boards and committees, including the Dare County Airport Authority, the Government and Educational Access Channel Committee, the Five-on-Five Committee with the Board of Education and Capital Improvements and Planning Committee, as well as the Tourism Board, Public Facilities Corporation, Abermaw Rural Planning Organization, and the Trillium Health Resources Regional Board, among others. It's all but impossible to sum up everything that Vice Chairman Overman has done for this community. His passion, humility, and genuine care for the well-being of others have set an example for all of us to follow. Vice Chairman, as you step into the next chapter, know that you leave behind a legacy of compassion, resilience, and true service to your community. Your efforts have changed lives, and for that, we are incredibly grateful. On behalf of Dare County Board of Commissioners and all those lives who you have touched over the years, thank you Vice Chairman Overman. We wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors, and we look forward to seeing the continued positive impact you will make on the citizens of Dare County. I have a plaque, just like I had for Commissioner Bassnight and Commissioner Couch, I'd like to read this. Vice Chairman Overman, in grateful recognition of your exceptional public service and unwavering dedication to the citizens of Dare County for the past dedication to the citizens of Dare County for the past 11 years, your extraordinary leadership on the Saving Lives Task Force, as well as your diligent efforts in expanding resources for those affected by substance abuse, including the acquisition of Dare County's Mobile Recovery Support Unit, which was dedicated in your honor in October 2024, have transformed countless lives and brought renewed hope to individuals and families throughout the Dare County community. Vice Chairman Overman's unparalleled commitment to combating substance use in our community, as well as improving local resources and ensuring access to life-saving services, has a profound and lasting legacy of compassion and care for which you will always be remembered. It's signed by me by this date, 2024 will come down front. While he's been by my side for these last 11 years, I could not ask for a better friend. Look up here, Wally. This board unanimously has approved the naming of the conference room in the Health and Human Services Boardroom, Health and Human Services Facility, as the Walter L. Wally Overman Conference Room. Wally, could not thank you for your dedication and your loyalty to this community. We love you, buddy. Get well. Once again, Commissioner Bassnight, Commissioner Couch, Vice Chairman Overman, God bless each and every one of you for your service to this county. That completes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda. That's the award of the service pins. We have one this morning, and Jamie Derringer, come forward please to get your tenure pin from Hosey Wilson.
Welcome this morning.
Good morning. I must say, this is difficult to follow, but I've got some remarks I'd like to read and some things I'd like to say about Jamie and her tenure in our Land Records Department. Jamie Derringer started November 10th, 2014 in the Land Records Department. She now currently serves as a Land Records Technician in that department. She's been here about a year longer than I have, so I've known Jamie the whole time I've been here, and I consider her a friend. She's always been helpful with anything I've needed. She's stopped what she's doing, and I just believe that is part of her nature. And it is, the Land Records Department, division of our department is, it's kind of a dying profession. It's, you know, it deals with ownership and property mapping. I just looked a little while ago, just in the last year, we had 3,846 land transfer transactions through that office. Now, that's not everything that they have to analyze and figure out what's going on with the ownership or the mapping of parcels. So it is a very challenging profession, and she does it very well. I see her as a critical resource in what we do every day. It is where everything starts in our office, and it flows from that office to the appraisal department, to the listing department, to the collections department. It all hinges on the work that she does. She works for Robin Etheridge, who couldn't be here this morning, so I have the honor of presenting her tenure pin. But I do have some remarks from Robin that I would like to read. The Land Records Department reviews all documents that are recorded at the registry and the clerk's office that may affect value and taxation. So it's a department that delves into real estate, ownership, and property boundaries. Jamie was, was, and is perfect for the position, as she had a background in real estate, in a licensed insurance agent. She's worked with attorney's offices prior to coming to work for Dare County. So all that experience really gives her a broad perspective and understanding of what is behind these transactions, and it's something that, you know, they work with and analyze every day. And the work that she does, it speaks for itself. It's critical importance. So she works with five other individuals, or four other individuals, excuse me, and they are responsible for that along with the land transfer tax program. And they have all taken it upon themselves to learn the inner workings of that because it is a critical resource for this county. So that being said, her coworkers are here, they're all right here, and it's nice of them to be here today. So, let's see. Few words I would use to describe Jamie are polite, courteous, empathetic, calm, dedicated, level-headed, intelligent, educated, and just an overall good person. So, and I'd like to read a couple of other sentiments from her coworkers, because really, that's really the best compliment somebody can get, from the people that actually work with. Jamie is always a pleasure to work with. She is our go-to person, and that's in all caps, when it's something we need assistance with. Jamie is always kind and polite to taxpayers that come in the office needing help. She is a valuable part of our team, and we appreciate her. We look forward to many more years working together. So I think that pretty much speaks for itself. She is married to Major Jeff Derringer, who, as you know, has been with us quite some time as well. And Jeff, I consider a friend, and I've considered him a friend since day one. They have a daughter, Hannah, who I just met this morning, and I understand that her husband also works for the Sheriff's Department. So they are a family that serves Dare County in many different important capacities. So congratulations on 10, Jamie. You got 20 more left in you?
Thank you.
Where's Jeff? Jeff out there? Jeff, you married up, boy.
Chairman, our Employee of the Month could not be here this month, and so we'll do that next month, and that takes us to item four on the agenda, which is public comment. Before we go to public comment, if you received an award this morning, please go right outside and let's get your picture made. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When you do, when you come forward, please state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that comes on on the podium that says your time is beginning. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. If you're here to speak on the public hearing for the Schedule Standards Rules for Real Property Appraisal, for the public hearing on the Zoning Text Amendment to 22-27.15 of our ordinances, or the quasi-judicial hearing for Special Use Permit Number 5-2024, please wait until we call those items on the agenda, and you'll get your opportunity to speak at that time. So first on my list is Brian Harris.
Welcome this morning, Brian.
Good morning, Chairman. I just wanted to come down and really just thank you guys all for what has happened over the last seven months. You know, I showed up here in April, pretty nervous speaking in front of all you guys. I've gotten to know a lot of you, and I just, the Buxton Civic Association, we thank you so much. The meeting tonight, you know, they're well on their way. Things have definitely turned a corner after October, and I just, we couldn't be happy enough the way that things are headed. I appreciate everybody. Danny, thank you so much for my civics class over the last seven months. Before April, I came to Manayel, you know, it was a seasonal speeding ticket, but now I, you know, I've gotten to know you guys, and I definitely have enjoyed coming here once a month. I just wanted to thank you guys personally. Thank you guys all for, you know, the hard work it's been the last seven months to make the Army Corps of Engineers kind of, you know, do a complete 180, and they really have. It's pretty impressive what's happened. I'll let them update everybody tonight, but they're making a lot of progress. The other thing I wanted to say is just, you know, three weeks ago, the Buxton Motels, we took another hit. You guys, everybody's worried about beach nourishment. We do have a new owner of the Cape Hatteras Motel. Their Vice President, Teresa Hamm, she's actually signed up for the public comments. She's going to be speaking after me. She just needs help. She's got a lot of questions for the Civic Association that weren't Civic Association questions, just with KAMA permits, and I just, I told her, I felt like she needed to come here, introduce herself to you guys, and you guys could, you know, start tackling that issue with her. So once again, just thank you, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Teresa Hamm.
Welcome this morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. My name is Teresa Hamm, Cape Hatteras Motel, I'm the Vice President of Operations. We are in the process of getting our sandbag permit. We have completed the application and submitted it to the National Seashore as well as KAMA. We do have several concerns, and we're asking for any help that this group can give us financially as well. So we did get a sandbag quote, and it was $108,000, which is a lot. Our concern is that we're the very first property when you come on to, into Buxton. It gets very narrow there. We own property on both sides, so Soundside and Oceanside. Oceanside sustained a pretty significant hit over the last month, and I know that there is another very large tide coming in in about two weeks. We're very concerned about that. Our other concern is for Highway 12, because it is very narrow right where we come in. The water comes from the ocean all the way to the Soundside. We were in about two feet of water on the Soundside just, you know, a week ago. So anything that you can do to help speed up our application, they have been submitted both in KAMA and the National Seashore. Any funding that's available, or if North Carolina DOT has anything to do with the 12 right there where it gets very narrow, but it's a great concern for us and everybody that lives in Buxton right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Aida Hall.
Welcome this morning, Aida.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Aida Havel, and I live in Salvo. This morning, I want to acknowledge and thank the three retiring Commissioners. First Commissioner Wally Overman has been a wonderful advocate for all of the people in Dare County who suffer from addiction. I honestly wasn't aware of all the help that was available until I attended a meeting of the Saving Lives Task Force in Avon in January of this year. Wally was busy setting everything up, coordinating about 10 speakers, and making sure everything ran smoothly, and it did. I could tell his heart was really in it. He is certainly leaving this issue in a much better place than when he found it. Second Commissioner Bee Bassnight, who has been a great advocate for the students of Dare County, first on the school board and then on this Board of Commissioners. When the subject of early college arose, I truly appreciated your questions about whether the parents and students had been surveyed and whether, if we built a $25 million building, they would come. I also very much appreciated your attendance at the Juneteenth Celebration this year, which marked the first time in four years of this federal holiday that any Dare County Commissioner has attended. I wish you well in all your future endeavors. Third, my own Commissioner, Danny Couch. My husband and I first met Danny in 2009, at the 10th anniversary of the move of the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse. On that occasion, Danny stood up and said publicly, 10 years ago, I was against the move of the lighthouse, and I was wrong. I'm glad they saved it. I was so impressed that a public figure would stand up and admit that he was wrong, and he and my husband quickly bonded over their shared knowledge of and love for the lighthouse. When we decided to move here a few years later, Danny was our only choice for a realtor, and I know that he must have thought that we were never going to buy a house because we were so picky, and we looked at so many houses for so long. When we finally got a house under contract and ran into a few problems, we were at our wits' end, and we came down for a talk with Danny about what to do. He listened to our fears of losing the house, and then he said, listen, you're at a Golden Corral buffet, and you're worried about crackers and croutons. It didn't make a lot of sense, but it was exactly what we needed to hear at that moment. And a few months later, we were able to close on that dream house in Salvo. My favorite remembrance of Danny was when he took a reporter from the CBS Morning Show over to Shelley Island on a kayak, where they proceeded to have an interview while sitting in beach chairs. Danny said, this is the mother of all sandbars. It's a hoss. It's huge. It belongs to the American people, and we need to enjoy it while we have it. The image of him sitting there in that beach chair, in his beach hat, with his Southern Island drawl, will always be one of my favorite memories of Danny. Of course, none of this has anything to do with Danny's two terms as Dare County's representative from Hatteras Island. He has been our advocate on issues related to Highway 12, erosion, bridges, and storm drainage. Most recently, he has spent countless hours speaking to elected representatives in Washington and others about the contamination at Buxton Beach, and those efforts are now paying off. And he has been a fantastic advisor to the Buxton Civic Association as it formed and found its voice. And I haven't even mentioned his good relationship with the National Park Service, which has in turn allowed the residents of Hatteras Island to become true partners with the Park Service, which has consulted with local residents on many issues important to us. And I haven't mentioned his 18 years as Chair of the Friends of the Graveyard of the Atlantic Museum, a time in which he helped steer the Friends Group and the museum through COVID and a complete expansion of the museum, which has reopened to almost universal acclaim. Danny has also spent much time sharing his personal history of growing up on the island, as well as stories of island history from the indigenous Americans, through the colonists, through Billy Mitchell, and up to the present day. Tour groups have thoroughly enjoyed the way he weaves island history with amusing insights and comments on the way things really are. What I hope I have done is to convey in some small way how much Danny has meant to both residents of and visitors to Hatteras Island, and to thank him for his decades of service, both before becoming a Commissioner and since. Danny, whatever follows you will have big shoes to fill, and they will never, ever top your Shelley Island interview, which by the way, can be found on YouTube. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Aida. Next is Jessica Sands.
Welcome this morning, Jessica.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jessica Sands, and I am a resident of Collington and also the Executive Director of the Dare County Arts Council. Today marks the kickoff of Outer Banks Veterans Week, and I wanted to just make you aware of the initiatives that Dare County Arts Council has put forth for 12 years. For 12 years, we have developed programming for our veterans and I'm pleased to share that our 12th Annual Outer Banks Veterans Writing Workshop will be hosted this weekend at the Coastal Studies Institute. We're delighted to bring in, uh, this year's theme is songwriting and we're bringing in three instructors from across the country. And they represent organizations such as the Veterans Writing Project and Soldier Songs and Voices. I also want to invite you and everyone to the Outer Banks Veterans Concert, which is going to be held this Saturday night, 7:00 PM at the beautiful Pioneer Theater in Manio. And the last piece I wanted to make you aware of is that we have put together a digital directory of all of the ceremonies and special events and some of the discounts and freebies offered to our local veterans, um, active duty military and their families this week. You can visit darearts.org and click on that first banner and it'll bring you to all of that, um, stuff. So thank you so much for that. And finally, uh, on behalf of Dare County Arts Council, I want to extend, um, a thank you to both Commissioner Couch and Commissioner Baznight. Your support of the arts in this community is, um, has been just nothing short of amazing. I don't know, you probably don't remember this, but, um, I was on the board for Theater of Dare when your daughter was active with our organization and she was just the most lovely young person. And then I found out that, I met her before you and, and found out that, that you were her dad. Um, and obviously, um, Bee, you are dear, dear to the Arts Council and, um, I know that we'll continue to work together. And, uh, your voices on this board will be missed. So thank you so much for everything you've done over the years.
Thank you, Jessica. That's all the silence I have. Does anyone else like to speak in public comment? Any other public comment this morning? Seeing none, is there any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to item number five. Uh, this is a public hearing for the 2025 Schedule Standards and Rules for Real Property Appraisal. And Jose, would you like to say anything about that before we conduct the public here? That's here for a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to that issue, the rules that I said earlier apply. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to that issue? Seeing none, then is there any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
All right. Is there any action needs to be taken with that Jose? Okay. That moves us to item six. Uh, this is a public hearing on a zoning text amendment, section 22 dash 27 point 15 of the Dare County Zoning Ordinance. And Morgan is here. Are you going to do that now?
Morning Chairman Commissioners. A zoning text amendment application has been submitted by Karen and Cliff Spencer and Spencer McGill to amend section 22 dash 27 point 15, which is the Wain Cheese Wharf Marine Commercial Zoning District, also known as the MC1 District. The applicants are seeking to amend the ordinance to allow automotive service and repair within this district. The zoning district is designed to be utilized for commercial and harbor-related activities. Currently in Wain Cheese, there's one other zoning district, the Resident Business District, that allows automotive repair services. The property in question, um, even though the text amendment is not site-specific, is located at 157 Beverly Drive in Wain Cheese. The property is owned by Paul Spencer and he has given the applicant permission to speak on his behalf. Planning staff finds that the proposed text amendment would be similar intensity as existing businesses located within the MC1 District and would be keeping in the scope of the intent of the MC1 District. Considering the nature of existing uses in the area include boatyards, box making facilities, outboard engine repair, boat repair, and other uses that are commercial and industrial in nature. It is planning staff's opinion that the proposed use would not disrupt the flow and appearance of the zoning district and the surrounding neighborhood. The Dare County Planning Board reviewed, um, the proposed amendment at their October 1st, um, meeting during the public comment. There was a large number of people in support of the amendment from, um, the Wain Cheese community. There's petition in your packet with 34 signatures and an email of support. At the close of the discussion, the planning board, um, voted unanimously to recommend, um, approval of the proposed amendment as a permitted use.
Any questions for Noah? That would, we'll begin the public hearing. First on my list is Ronald Carter.
Welcome this morning, Ronald. Congratulations to the three that are exiting as well. Best endeavor to the next. Right quick, I live at 92 Sawyer Drive, which is inside of the MC1 District. Uh, I have since come to the first meeting and gained knowledge about the reasoning for the change. I come from Brunswick County and a boatbuilding industry and community myself, which led me to Wain Cheese with the residency for two years at 92 Sawyer. I see absolutely no problem with, with the auto shop at all. They, the, it's a small business for a big impact in a little community. Is the best way I can put it to keep it short and sweet. I know I could benefit from it myself and I'm pretty sure those that stood in line the last time with me will do the same as well. As far as benefiting, add the community, add in the business. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cliff Spencer?
Welcome, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good morning. Um, the amendment, the text amendment, um, we would like to have, I mean, we, we're allowed to tear apart 2,600 horsepower engines that contain 25 gallons of oil in it. Uh, we're just asking to be able to tear apart a little car engine that holds six quarts. I mean, I think it falls well within the scope of zoning work. All of our neighbors up and down in the whole zoning area, um, had no issues with it. Since then, we've had several more people sign, uh, in support of the, um, amendment. So we just ask for your consideration in having it. I don't know if y'all need this or, um, yes. And, and that's all really I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
My name is Keith Tig. I'm attorney representing Cliff and Karen and would just simply say that if you look at this particular ordinance, you'll find that there are about 24 different uses you could classify in the marine type nature, but then there are also about 12 other that are outside of that. It's simply what we're asking to do is change the text so that they're permitted to operate a very small facility there for working on automobiles. Obviously, they have a lot of employees. Uh, they have someone that's willing to start a, a new business who's in their twenties and it gives them a little entrepreneurship as well. And we would ask that you follow the recommendations, uh, and allow this textual change. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak to that issue? Please come forward and state your name.
Yes, ma'am. State your name and.
My name is Christine Pridgen. I live at 229 Beverly, right next door to where this shop is going. I think it'd be a great asset to the Wain Cheese community. Um, very small community and obviously there's only one shop right now. And it'd be great to have, um, more ability and access to auto repair. And it's, and it's in a great location. It's not really near anybody. It's just us and a few other people on the street and we're all good for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else like to speak to this issue? Anyone in Buxton would like to speak to this issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, we would close the public hearing and Mr. Chairman, I'll for you and the board to consider.
Noah, would you step up a minute? I think part of your comments and presentation, you said that the planning board re- reviewed the proposed amendment on its, at its October 1 meeting. And you didn't say how many were in attendance, but those in attendance at that board meeting spoke overwhelmingly in favor of this proposed text amendment? And I think you also state in addition, the applicant submitted a petition gathering 34 signatures and one email from residents and they were all in support of this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. During the meeting, only one, one, um, one person during public comments spoke, um, opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody, anybody else have any questions at all? Okay. At this time then, I would ask what the pleasure of the board is.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, um, section 22, 27 dash 15 MC dash 1 zoning district. Okay. That's a motion on the floor by Commissioner, to Commissioner Bateman to approve. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Couch.
I'm sorry.
We're just going to correct that motion.
Yeah, you need to.
Can you include the findings of fact?
Yes. Include that in your motion.
In the motion, there's a, a statement of consistency and reasonableness that has to be adopted of your motion.
Policies Dare County Board of Commissioners finds proposed amendment in the section 22, 27, 15 MC dash 1 to be consistent with the Dare County land use plan. Is that good?
That works.
Okay. Okay.
I'm fine with the second one.
All right. The second is, uh, fine with that. The floor is open for any further discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Pose like that? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Chairman, this brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a quasi judicial hearing for Special Use Permit Number 5 dash 202, 2024 submitted by Dale and Anna Petty of Surf and Sound Realty. Have you all resolved this? Okay. Um, if you would present it, then then we can talk about what the order will reflect.
Right. A special use permit application and site plan for development of a storage warehouse has been submitted by Dale and Anna Petty on behalf of Surf and, Surf or Sound Realty. The parcel for development proposal is identified as parcel 014722000 in the Dare County tax records and is located at 40177 Westerly Lane in Avon. The property is owned C2 General Commercial and storage warehouses are permitted as a special use. The applicant owns the adjacent parcel to the east where he currently operates the Surf or Sound Realty office. The applicant intends to take 4,700 square feet of the Realty Office property and recombine it with this property to give him a total of 34,513 square feet. The applicant is proposing to construct a 9,478 square foot storage warehouse. The proposed lot coverage on the site is 28.8%. The C2 Commercial District allows a lot coverage of 60%. Uh, the building will have 2,000, roughly 2,000 square feet dedicated to office space with the remaining 7,000 square feet dedicated to storage. The property is boarded by a canal that connects to the Pemlico Sound and is located inside the KAMA area of environmental concern and will trigger the need for KAMA permits. Uh, the property is located in AE4 flood zone. The applicant is proposing to build the structure as slab on grade and bring in filled material supported by retaining wall. The filled material and the retaining wall will have to be designed and certified by a third-party engineer. The applicant is proposing to access the property through his adjoining lot with a shared easement that is shown on the site plan. That easement will need to be recorded in the registered deeds. The C2 ordinance requires a visual buffer. When a commercial use abuts a residential use or a residential zoning district, a vegetative buffer has been shown on the site plan. The area of disturbance to the property is below the need for triggering any state permits, sedimentation, erosion control or stormwater management permits. The Dare County Fire Marshal has reviewed the site plan, um, and approved it. Um, comments have been included in the draft S U P to capture his comments. Um, the planning board reviewed this on October 1st and found the draft S U P and the conditions, um, in site plan to be reasonable and appropriate for the intended use.
Chairman, this was initially going to have a contested hearing. I think the parties have come to some resolution. I'd ask the two attorneys to come forward. Tell them who you are, who you represent, and then let us understand what the resolution is.
Good morning. I'm Lloyd C. Smith Jr. from Windsor. It's nice to be back in front of y'all. I represent Dale and Anna Petty, the applicants.
I'm John Carmichael with Robson Bradshaw. I'm a lawyer, uh, here on behalf of Ms. Barbara Gray Fields. She owns the adjacent property to the north. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
And, um, Ms. Fields had some concerns which, uh, uh, my clients are willing to address, which change some of the, the conditions. Make them stronger, I would suggest, not, uh, any way they're weaker and they would read as follows. And we also have a large, uh, map that we'd like to submit because it, right now, we didn't have time to get our survey or.
Let me ask you a couple of questions first. We can get past them. Do you all agree to the facts as they were presented by Mr. Gillum a few minutes ago?
Yes.
All right. And then do you all consent to the entry into the record of the file in this matter, which would include that map that the board has reviewed?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. We also ha- have a written document that I typed up, but it's got some scribble on it. I'm happy to submit that too. But we'll read it into the record.
Want me to read it into the record?
Yeah, we'll read in the record.
You, you read it and then submit it so that we can modify the order accordingly, assuming the board agrees with the condition.
Assuming that, of course, the board makes the original approval, but, uh, the first change is, is in addition to the visual buffer, applicants shall install and maintain an opaque privacy fence along the entire northern boundary of the applicant's property. The height of the, uh, fence shall be the maximum height allowed under the zoning ordinance and the finished side of the fence as opposed to the side with the exposed structural supports shall face the abutting property to the north, which is Mrs. Field's property. The maximum height is the, is 10 feet for this fence. There's already existing seven-foot fence that has been approved, has been there for about 22 years. So we will start that 10-foot fence at the end of that seven-foot fence, which will more than cover Mrs. Field's property. It'll cover all the way down to the KAMA break shown on the map. We can't obviously build in a KAMA area. Uh, so that's the first change.
I'll make a correction to that. Fence can be placed inside the KAMA buffer.
Okay. All right. Well, we didn't know that, but we've agreed to build it to the KAMA buffers to be on the safe side with.
So that, I guess we just say the fence shall be 10 feet then. I didn't know the, shall be 10 feet.
That's fine. 10 feet is great. Uh, we've agreed to increase the width of the planted visual buffer along the northern boundary of the applicant's property from five feet to 10 feet. This visual buffer shall meet the condition, requirements of condition 11 proposed by the planning staff with only one change. That will be that only evergreen trees shall be planted or installed. Number three is that exterior lighting installed on the sides of the building facing the abutting property to the north, which again is Mrs. Field's property, or the canal shall be activated by an on or off switch and not automatically come on is the purpose of that. And number five, no employee break area. Oops, I skipped one. I'm sorry. The, uh, the, uh, exterior HVAC equipment, which is shown on the plat, shall be relocated between office two and the women's toilet. That's moving it. I don't, I, I don't know the exact number of feet, but somewhere between 75 and 100 feet further from Mrs. Field's property. And then number five, uh, no employee break areas or gathering areas shall be located in the area shown on this map, which basically begins at the northeast corner of the posed structure and will be 20 feet wide, from south of Mrs. Field's property running all the way down to the canal. And I, this is hatched in and our engineer will provide actual meets and bounds for that. So there'll be no question as to where it is and what its, uh, call is.
Can I look at that design?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, to the canal. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. With that said, do you all consent to the order as written with these five changes?
We do.
I do.
Do, and your client does as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and if I need to speak in favor of this project further, if the Commissioners feel like hearing me drawn on, I'll be glad to do so because it does some other good things like it requires, uh, Westerly Lane to be brought up the heavy duty fire code. And our clients are going to, my clients are going to do that, which will help the 14 houses that are back behind this. So they too will be able to get heavy emergency and fire equipment back there because of gravel that our clients are willing to put back all the way. Because as they, their intent, as shown by the changes, is to be nothing but a good neighbor. They've had a building like this for 22 years in a similar location and never had a complaint. So that photo you have in there is pretty, is pretty rough looking road. What, what do you all, tell me what you're going to do to it again? You're going to resurface it? You go. We're going to put gravel on it. Okay. As required by the Fire Marshal. Right. That'll hold up seventy five thousand pounds. Okay. All the way its length. Right. And we will meet the width requirements that Fire Marshal and Noel require. That's in the conditions of permit. Is that? Yeah, to the end, to the end of our property. Right. Where the road actually, I think, almost ends. Is there a stormwater issue there? There's a lot of water on that. Once you do that, will that kind of mitigate that issue? We hope so, yes, sir. I mean, we've seen that road underwater several times over the last twelve years, and I think raising it up, putting gravel there is going to help it. That's what our engineer says. I am not an engineer, I'm a talker. Got you. And I, and both parties have come to agreement with these additional five conditions?
Okay. If you have questions, then there's one other question I need to ask.
Does this mean the two attorneys won't be donning boxing gloves and settling this in the parking lot?
Right.
Yes.
Yes. I'd have to hit him with my walker, it wouldn't be fair.
Is there anyone else here that would like to present evidence with regard to this matter? Anyone in Buxton like to present evidence with regard to this matter?
No comment from Buxton.
That's Mr. Chairman, unless you have other questions, it's with the board.
So we need a, if we're, if we're going to move on this, we need a motion to approve the draft supplement and site plan with the changes?
Correct.
Okay. And, all right, so if anyone willing, anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
I'm willing to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's on the floor by then by Commissioner Couch, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you working that out.
Just give that to Bobby.
Bobby? Come back and see us when you get all that done. That'd be nice.
On the agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item eight is a resolution in support of Dare County NC recognizing and approving the Dare County Official American Two Hundred and Fifty Committee for the United States semi, semi quintessential. And Dorothy, if you. Two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty.
If, if you'd like to make some comments with that, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there have been a couple of meetings from counties in eastern North Carolina trying to garner support for every county in North Carolina to participate in the initiative to celebrate and commemorate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So that's, of course, happens in two thousand twenty six, but what the State Department of Natural and Cultural Resources is asking is that we get started and plan things as part of this celebration over the next two, two years or so. So we had our initial meeting on Friday. We had a great group participating.
Let me interrupt you just a second.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't have a committee, and we got word in between meetings that needed it. We had a deadline. We had to meet to have a committee to be able to participate. So I got with Dorothy. Dorothy had gotten with Megan at the library, and we had some conversations, and we put together a committee to, so that we could meet that deadline. Dorothy is just telling me that committee met on Friday. When we get to the end and answer your questions, we're going to ask you to approve this committee as well as approve the, the resolution that we'll read. But again, this is a committee that we put together for your approval, so.
Right.
Go ahead.
And Commissioner Couch is serving, and he said he'll continue to serve. But it was a diverse group, people, the folks, we had about twenty four people around the table on Friday. We're starting large. We'll condense down and make, plan events that are feasible, that we can handle. So is there anything?
Is the list of committee members in your board?
It is.
It is. So you, you've seen that, okay?
Yeah.
We hope to bring the Board of Education on board with a representative to get some curriculum in the schools and also Dare Arts, maybe to plan a mural or something in keeping. So we have some big ideas. We'll continue to work through that. There are two grant opportunities that are due by mid-December. So we are asking, one of those has no matching funds for ten thousand. The other that's for up to thirty thousand has a fifteen percent match for Dare County as a tier two county. So we're asking for forty five hundred dollars from contingency. And I'll ask Commissioner Couch if he has anything to add.
Just that this entire concept is very relevant to the Outer Banks. There's going to be a lot of good work come out of this.
So, and would you like me to read the resolution?
Would you please?
Sure. Whereas Roy Cooper, Governor of North Carolina, created America Two Hundred and Fifty NC to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate commemoration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States and North Carolina's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas America Two Hundred and Fifty NC has a mission to engage all North Carolinians in all one hundred counties through their many signatures and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the commemoration by inspiring future leaders and celebrating North Carolina's contributions to the nature over the last, to the nation over the last two hundred and fifty years. And whereas by adoption of America's Two Hundred and Fifty NC's mission, a Dare County Committee is officially formed to achieve the goals of America Two Hundred and Fifty NC. Therefore, be it resolved that the Dare, that Dare, that the County of Dare hereby endorses America Two Hundred and Fifty NC and its mission. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Dare County, that the County of Dare officially establishes an America Two Hundred and Fifty NC Committee made up of a diverse group of citizens to work with America Two Hundred and Fifty NC on any and all activities. And the participants of this Dare County Committee will be strictly voluntary roles, and there will be no compensation for participation. And therefore, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the legislative delegation and the American Two Hundred and Fifty NC Committee this the fourth day of November two thousand twenty four. So if you approve this, you, you will approve this, you will authorize us to do the grant with the matching funds, and you'll also approve the committee as presented to you.
And the matching?
Yeah.
You make questions of Dorothy Obama concerning this?
Make the motion, adopt the resolution, give approval to submit applications, request funding for the American Two Hundred and Fifty North County Grant Initiatives.
All right. Motion on the floor by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by.
Second.
Commissioner Ross. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thanks, Dorothy. Item nine on the agenda. If you recall, a meeting or so ago, we came to you and we talked about the contract that we had with Port and that we thought we had a better use of our funding and a better way to meet our gaps. And we told you that we would come back to you at today's meeting to sort of go through that with you. And she was here to present that to you and then answer any questions and then sort of set some priorities for how we spend those funds.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheila.
So as Bobby said at the, your last meeting, you approved not proceeding with renewing the contract with Trillium, which provided funds to Port to support uninsured and under sure, underinsured individuals seeking substance abuse and mental health care. The reason we made the recommendation in the first place is due to Port's challenges with staffing and overall operations. The numbers that they were, that they were serving on a monthly basis dropped from about sixteen hundred at their peak to an average of three hundred and twenty six over the last six to eight months. And a third of those, three hundred and twenty six, being adolescents. You may recall back in May or early June, we received word that the only school-based counselor employed by Port had resigned as well, so leaving then no counselors in the schools to provide mental health and substance abuse treatment. We were able at that time, DHHS, to use some one-time funding that was available for fiscal year twenty four, to bring that clinician on back in a part-time capacity to be able to serve First Flight and First Flight Middle and First Flight High School. That's where she was working before she resigned from Port. The recommendation today is to use that funding that's now just in DHHS since we did not execute the contract with Trillium to provide three F T E licensed clinical social workers to work in the schools in a similar fashion to our school nurse program. This would, we would recommend allocating one per geographic area, so one licensed clinical social worker that would provide services to the Hatteras Schools, one to the First Flight Schools, also including Kitty Hawk Elementary and Nagshead Elementary, and the one for the Manio Schools. These clinicians could also help cover each other if they found the volume in one district was higher than in another, they could still help one another with the volume. The funding to do that would approximately be three hundred and fifteen thousand for the three F T Es benefits, so on and so forth. The full total of the funding that we did not reallocate was three hundred and forty thousand. We also request using that twenty five thousand, approximately the difference, to put towards the Sound Mind Program. You all may recall back in October of two thousand twenty three, the Outer Banks Community Foundation launched a program, well, they provided the funding for a program that was launched. It's a collaboration with Interfaith Community Outreach, Health and Human Services, and the Outer Banks Relief Foundation. And the Sound Mind Program provides direct coverage of behavioral health, substance abuse counseling for individuals who cannot afford it. They qualify through a process with DSS and I C O, and then the bill for services is paid out of those funds. Originally, that fund was started with forty thousand dollars as part of the forty, as part of the fortieth anniversary for the Outer Banks Community Foundation. But since then, it has grown now to over a hundred thousand. That's the additional support from the Community Foundation and I C O. So this breakdown, the three F T Es for the schools and the support of the Sound Minds would cover, basically, the Sound Minds would support what we were doing with the Port money before, but then now really enhance the opportunities for youth. You may recall, too, at the State of the Child Conference that was just hosted recently by the Children Youth Partnership, this was one of the recommendations that came out from the conference was the need for school-based counselors, specifically licensed clinical social workers. In fact, I would like, if you don't mind, to read you a pretty concerning data that was collected, that was also shared at the, the State of the Child Conference. So of note, the students reporting this to the school nurse for one-on-one counseling sessions to the school nurse for, for mental health issues did decrease from previous years, from the previous year. However, it is still up significantly from two thousand and nineteen, which was pre-COVID, when the nurses saw a total of two hundred and thirty seven students. Last year, they saw a total of three hundred and forty one students for mental health counseling. But the most concerning statistic is the breakdown of those numbers. In two thousand and nineteen, the school nurses saw nineteen elementary school students related to mental health issues. But in twenty two, twenty three, the elementary school nurses saw a hundred and sixty students. And in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Sheila, I'm sorry, I gotta stop you. A hundred and sixty elementary schools?
And last year, a hundred and seventy three. That's, yeah, the, the data for this recommendation, which you only stopped me a little bit early because I was just giving you the one seventy four number, it was last year. I have been in touch with the school superintendent, who is beyond supportive of this, speaking to the need. And I think this is a much better utilization of the funds because we're going to be able to reach way more students than have previously been reached, but also still have money to support the gaps for our adult population who is either uninsured or underinsured.
One other thing that I'll, I'll add, we, we did meet with the Port folks. We went to Raleigh and, and met, and they understand, and they were actually supportive of, of what we were doing, so we, we don't have any issues with them either, so.
I'm flabbergasted.
I am.
I heard three hundred and forty one. If I followed your stats, you said it went from two hundred and thirty seven school students to three hundred and forty one? And half of them are elementary, a hundred and seventy? You guys hearing this?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. It's astounding.
Then, what the hell's going on? I mean, the three hundred thousand notwithstanding, what is going on, Sheila? Can you help us understand this?
Well, there are, I mean, it's a number thing. Obviously, mental health is a, you know, is a very complex challenge. I think what you're seeing is the impact of some social economic stressors on families that are resulting and impacting children. So, and I think it's also just dysfunction in the home. What you're seeing when you have this number of elementary school children is it starts out of behavioral issues.
Four years, Sheila. Twenty nineteen to, I wrote down twenty twenty three. Is that the wrong year? Should it be twenty four?
No, twenty twenty two and then twenty twenty three, the one sixty and the one seventy. So three, three and four years.
We don't want to know what one twenty twenty four is going to be.
Guys, I feel like we're giving a squirt gun to put out a towering inferno here.
So what's happening with those visits is it's children going to the school nurse, who is able to kind of hopefully de-escalate. They've received some training with that. A large number of those do need to be referred on to services. This will help give them a place. Not all of them do, but a number of them do. So this would, I'll come back and give you some updates. I think this is.
Yeah, we're going to see you later.
Our, our counselor, you know, can serve, when, when the counselor was full-time, was carrying a caseload of roughly a hundred students. So this would really go a long way in meeting the need that's been identified if we could have three of these clinicians.
Three? I was expecting you to say we need nine. I swear to God.
We may need, I mean.
This is terrible. I mean, we spent all the time this morning doing a lot of great things and recognize our employees, but I don't feel business as usual at all, given what you're describing. This is an underlying disaster in our community, guys. And bubbling up through elementary school? You said it was financial stressors, social stressors, and dysfunctionality. Did that just happen overnight from nineteen to twenty three in four years? There had to be. I, I, I'm looking for what is going on besides us putting more counselors to meet with these poor disturbed kids? Is there? Okay, probably unanswerable. Continue, Sheila.
Sheila, these, has, have your counselors, have our counselors been identified, these three?
No. We would need to recruit and hire.
Okay. I really think that kids, especially elementary kids, and I'm sure everybody would agree, they're looking for somebody to talk to, and nobody's more qualified to listen than a childhood counselor.
I agree.
Sheila, is this, these F T Es, would this, would this fall under your budget that you're asking us to, to look at?
Yes, and I'm not asking for any new money. This is the money that, but yes, it would stay under DHHS. And as discussed with the superintendent, we would run the same model like we do with the school nurses, where they're DHHS employees as, you know, instead of school employees.
But going forward, though, we'd still, we'd still have to. But going forward though, we'd still, we'd still have to look at that three fifteen annually, right?
No, sir.
We're not?
You, you, well, we look at everything annually.
Right, right.
I wasn't being smart, but that three hundred thousand dollars, that three hundred and forty thousand dollars was our annual contract with Port, and we've been doing that for years.
Right, right.
And so theoretically, with a budget, neutral budget, you would do that again, only instead of allocating it to Port, you'd be allocating it to this program.
Gotcha, okay. And, and we do this, and can we monitor this to see how-
Well, you're reading my mind.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to report back every ninety years or something.
Yeah, we need to monitor this in case-
Absolutely.
Whatever's reasonable.
Right.
Honest to God.
Absolutely, and the other thing I would like to add, you know, and as part of not only numbers served and diagnoses, we can give you a lot of de-identified information. The other thing that we're tracking is by employing licensed clinical social workers, if, if a child has insurance and we can build that, so Medicaid covers these services, we will actually be able to collect some revenue from that, which then could offset the expense, so I can then, you know, provide an update of what that looks like.
Okay.
But the services are reimbursable through insurance.
I, excuse me, Big.
Sheila, what role, if any, do the school social workers play in this? Do we still have social workers in school, right?
Absolutely. So the school social workers, that would basically be another avenue of referring for these individuals. So they would likely meet with a student, just as they're meeting now, but if they realize that a student needs reoccurring counseling support at a higher level, then they can refer. There'll be multiple referral avenues, whether it's the school nurse, right now is one of the major ways, but that's how they would work in tandem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Sheila, do you have any, the initial contact that the student has with someone at the school, do you have any idea how much, how many go to the next level? I mean, I know Little Ricky comes in, he's upset because of something happened to him, he has a conversation. Do you have any idea how much of that is not resolved there and goes to the next level out of the numbers you just gave us?
I don't have a good feel for that because we've only, you know, prior to us contracting with the school-based counselor back at the end of May, beginning of June, the school-based counselor was under Port and only providing services at First Flight Middle and First Flight High School, so I don't really have geographic. I certainly can follow up and ask for that information. I know overall, we track when a child comes to the school nurse, whether it's for a medical emergency, a behavioral health, mental health agency, we do track, does that school, does that student, are they able to return to the classroom that day? And ninety-four percent of the students do return back to the classroom that same day, so doesn't speak to exactly what you're asking, but at least that there's an intervention to help them gain what they need to gain, you know, from a status perspective, to be able to re-enter the classroom. But beyond that, I don't have the data of, you know, how many of those then went on for reoccurring counseling or treatment, though I do know the caseload that the clinician had carrying at First Flight Middle and First Flight High was about a hundred students.
It's really good that we have those people for those kids to come, for whatever reason, and have, because they look at those folks as being authoritarian, as being somebody they can talk to, and communication, as we all know, is key.
Absolutely.
And one thing, Commissioner Ross, that was just on a call, this is an aside from this, but may find interesting, the state, in light of what's happened in the western part of the state, has just contracted, as of the end of last week, with a new service. It's going to be available to all teens thirteen and over throughout the entire state. It is a warm line, peer support line, where people, peer support specialists basically in their twenties, will be available twenty-four, twenty-four-seven for a call line. We'll be getting more information soon to promote that and share that information with our schools, but they're recognizing that what we're seeing in Dare County is not unique as far as the number of students and youth that need additional support.
Now you're making me feel worse.
That was not my intention.
I know. I think it was.
But I think it's just speaking to the recognition that-
This is becoming kind of daily news. This is, what would they, what's the phrase used, Mary Helen, the new normal? Hundreds in elementary seeking mental health, providing peer support throughout the state because it's not unique? Guys, this is a problem. I, Sheila, I appreciate everything you're telling us. You've just scared me to death.
Sheila, how, how soon would you be able to get these three FTEs on board? Do you have any idea?
Well, with your approval today, we would probably start trying to post maybe as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
So your request here on our agenda is consider recommendations, would you prefer to correct that to ask us to approve those considerations that you just presented us?
Yes, sir. I would much appreciate it if you all would approve those recommendations.
Okay, all right.
I'm motioning we approve the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and redirect it to the three counselors, as Sheila has recommended, and the twenty-five thousand dollars for, I forget the program.
Sound Minds.
Sound Minds.
Okay, it's motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I see this as an excellent opportunity. I sit on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which does provide counseling to juveniles that are, have, are at risk of getting in the wrong side of the law, and I can see this as a big benefit, actually cut, cut it off at the feet before they get to that level, and I would be fully in support of this, and hopefully it'll also help our juvenile crime prevention councils as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye.
All right.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
County manager?
Yes, sir, that brings us to item ten on the agenda. As you know, we have a Parks and Rec Needs Assessment underway, and we've gotten some calls, and you've got some calls, and just, we've got Spencer here just to tell you where that is, to tell you what the deadlines are, tell you where that's going. No action today, nothing for you to approve, just an update from Spencer.
Spencer, thank you.
Good morning. Morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Spencer, before you do that, bring the board up. You and I have certainly been talking about this quite a bit. I'd like the board to be aware of the Satterfield situation is complete, First Flight Middle School behind that's complete. Would you bring the board up to date, just real quickly with those?
Sure, so the First Flight Project, they played soccer this, this fall on the First Flight Middle School field, and we put five acres of sod out there, and we sprigged the baseball and softball field, and we're hoping the baseball and softball field is going to be ready for the spring to play. They've been practicing baseball, but as far as, it takes a lot longer for the sprigs to take than obviously the sod, so that's a work in progress as far as the First Flight goes, but had many compliments on the First Flight field, looks great out there. They had their middle school season out there, and they had some soccer, travel soccer tournaments out there this, this fall. They had three fields going out there, so that was very successful. And as far as the Nagshead Satterfield Project goes, we have sotted the auxiliary part of the field. It's about an acre and a quarter worth of sod out there, and it's, it was completed Friday, and we, and we're hoping in, you know, springtime we'll be playing on it. So irrigation's installed, it's ready to go, just gotta, it's just gotta plant in and water it, and get it through this winter, and then hopefully with spring, we'll be ready to go on that field.
Super. Thank you for all your hard work on both of those.
Thank you for your support.
Having been out in Satterfield, you ought to go take a look. It looks really nice, and it really did turn out well.
Yep. So I just wanted to provide a brief progress report on the needs assessment that we've been, that started October ninth. So the survey was made public October ninth. We have had eleven hundred and thirty-seven as of Friday, eleven hundred and thirty-seven, one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven responses, and that represents two thousand three hundred and six individuals with this, that is six point two-three percent of the Dare County population, and that is a good response, according to McGill and Associates. They, they usually see three to five percent, so we're already past that threshold, so that's good. We have set a deadline for November twenty-second to finish the survey. We're hoping to get to ten percent, that's, that's a goal. It, it can have, they say it's rare to get ten percent, but, you know, we want to get ten percent, so we get, we want to get as much response as possible, and that's part of the reason I'm here, is to publicize it even more. We're going to make a bigger push these next two weeks to get more responses, because we know they're out there, we just got to get them to fill it out. It literally takes five minutes to fill it out, and so we just want to get everyone to fill it out and provide us their input. The week of October twentieth, McGill and Associates visited us, visited Dare County, and we had four, four public input sessions. One was in Manial at the Lions Club, one was at the Youth Center in Kildova Hills, one was at the Rodanthe Community Center, and one was at the Pheasant Center in Buxton. Attendance was good, we had close to about three hundred citizens combined. Citizens had the chance to talk to McGill and DCPR staff in person, and share their input verbally, in writing, and also via a visual preference board that was provided by McGill. Still to come, we have six to eight virtual focus group sessions with various selected groups within the county. We have a work session, you guys will have a work session with McGill, and then the final presentation of the plan to county staff to come.
What does "to come" mean?
So I, so they are going to present their final plan to us, and then I'll be, I guess I'm going to be presenting it to you guys.
Their final plan will be presented to you what day?
They didn't give me a day, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking December, January, December?
Let's get a date.
Okay, we'll do.
Chairman, we, I don't have a date specific, but we told them that we needed it before the end of February, so that we would have it as we prepared budget, and budget season starts the last day of February, so that's-
Yeah, because we're gonna, I'm gonna want to digest a little bit, so if we could get it, well, I'm just asking for a date.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And one thing that was interesting that they, McGill, they, they said that they feel, they were very, you know, we visited all the parks, we visited town parks too, county parks, town parks, and the McGill, Mike, who is the head guy at McGill, he said he hasn't never seen a community so vibrant than Dare County, and that was, and that was inactive. He was just so surprised when we went to all the parks, how active and vibrant the community in Dare County was, and I mentioned him, the Blue Zones Initiative, and that, I think that's why, you know, Blue Zones is here to, because they realize what a great community we have here, and, and, and so, anyway, I thought that was an interesting point that he brought up, because he visits counties all over North Carolina, and he said he's never seen a more vibrant, active community than Dare County.
Thank you for that update, Spencer. I'll ask our Public Information Officer, Dorothy, can we, can you help with this spreading the word some more on our site?
We have.
I know you have, but just, if you keep that up.
Yep.
And Spencer actually did a, the morning radio show with Ray and Jill, and was an excellent program that he put out over the radio, so, and I know that sparked a lot of interest as well.
Yeah, we're going to make one final push with our emails, and then, you know, we're going to be out in the community trying to get more people to fill out surveys at our events, and so.
Great, thank you, Spencer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us to item eleven on our agenda. We have Laura or Mary Helen here to talk to you about the Outer Banks National Scenic Byway Committee for the Frisco-Buxton Pathway Project.
Good morning, Commissioner.
How are you doing this morning?
I'm great, how are you doing?
Fine. Mary Helen, thank you.
Laura Erdl, as mentioned, doesn't need an introduction, but Mary Helen Goodlow-Murphy is here with me. We're representing the Outer Banks National Scenic Byway Committee for Dare County and the Frisco-Buxton Pathway Project, asking for your support again for some sidewalks in the town of Frisco. Once again, the Federal Highway Administration has announced another round of National Scenic Byway grant funding. We would like to apply for some of that money. We are looking to apply for five hundred thousand dollars to construct one half-mile of pathway, running from the Billy Mitchell Airport Road in Frisco north to a section of sidewalk that was gifted to the project near the Frisco Campground. We are working with NC DOT to use their easement. We also have a hundred thousand dollars from the Dare Tourism Bureau for matching funds. Today, we are asking the Board of Commissioners to agree to submit the National Scenic Byway Grant Application on our behalf, and to authorize the Dare County Manager to sign the application for submittal.
My understanding, that does not require a county match? Or does it?
Correct, no, no county match, no. It is a reimbursable grant, so we would be looking for assistance with that.
I believe you have a resolution you'd like us to consider?
Yes, would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. Whereas Frisco is an unincorporated village on Hatteras Island in the county, in the county of Dare, North Carolina, and whereas a need exists for paved off-road pathways through the village because of unsafe walking and cycling conditions along NC twelve and increased vehicular traffic, and whereas a conceptual plan and feasibility study calls for a multi-use pathway has been produced, and whereas after a long time, the National Scenic Byway Grant Opportunity has been announced with around twenty-three million available nationwide, and whereas the Outer Banks National Scenic Byway Committee for Dare and Frisco-Buxton Pathway Project, Inc., are developing a Frisco South Multi-Use Pathway Project Grant Application. Now therefore, Dare County Board of Commissioners agrees to submit the National Scenic Byway Grant Application at the request of Outer Banks National Scenic Byway Committee for Dare, and authorizes the Dare County Manager to sign said application for submittal.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, is it second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
How much is the request in this grant application?
We're requesting five hundred thousand.
Half a million. Okay, it said you have a hundred thousand raised already, or a hundred and fifty raised, and the tourism board would put a hundred.
So-
I was thinking you needed two fifty to cover it.
No, the, the five hundred thousand dollars, there's a ten percent match required from the federal grant. We also have to show NC DOT that we're able to maintain the sidewalk. That's where the, the, the money that we've raised to the Frisco Bathwa, Frisco-Buxton nonprofit, that would go towards maintenance of, of the project.
So the hundred and fifty thousand already raised would be paying for maintenance for a sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And addition, I mean, the dream of the project is to run-
I'll sweep it for a lot less.
They, they have to maintain the grassroots grass area on glass.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
That money will also go towards future projects. The, the dream of the project is to have it run from the Frisco Bath House to the Buxton Backroad, so that group is raising funds to make that happen. This is one portion of it.
Just looking at the math, Mary Helen, just looking at the math.
I'll add, there's miles of byway, and there's also wooden bridges, and so there's more than sweeping the sidewalk as well in maintaining it.
The community there in Frisco is really taking ownership of this, I'm very proud of them. They, it's really the smallest village on the island other than Salvo, but they've taken some ownership in it, it's a good thing to see.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, and seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good job.
Chairman, item twelve on the agenda is the approval for the Dare County Area College Construction Manager at Risk. You have before you, you have the submissions from the various companies that applied to be the construction manager at risk. The Capital Improvement Committee met a few weeks ago, they recommended Barn Hill. Dustin, I think in your evaluation, your team recommended Barn Hill as well, is that right? And so that comes before you, you don't have to choose Barn Hill, but that's where the recommendations are from the CIP and from staff, and you're here to select that person or that company to move forward.
Who were all of the bids from?
Were they not in your packet? Did we not include those?
They're in the packet.
They're in, they were in your packet, but if you want to come forward and let them just sell?
Seeing if we can get it on record.
Yeah.
Other than just what's in the packet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we received five bids.
Yep.
Barn Hill Contracting Company, Sussex out of Virginia, the Whiting Turner Company out of Virginia, AR Che- Barn Hill Contracting Company, Sussex out of Virginia, the Whiting Turner Company out of Virginia, uh AR Chesson. Um, and then another one we have never received a bid from. I apologize if I mispronounce this, Takaya Cooper out of Raleigh. Um, those are the five submissions that we received for this project.
Okay. Any other questions? We prepared to authorize Barn Hill as a preferred contractor and authorize the county manager to negotiate a signed contract. Are we prepared to do that? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous. Thanks Dustin.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Chairman, for uh item 13, um, in November, on November 14th and 15th, Association of County Commissioners is having their Legislative Goals Conference. Uh, they need each county to uh name a voting delegate. And so you need to name a voting delegate and an alternate to do that.
And I usually attend those, so.
Yes, I'll, I'll make the motion, Chairman, would it be your delegate?
Uh, second.
Okay, is any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.
Right, that brings us to item 14. This is the renewal of the Dare County Arts Council lease. Uh, you have that lease before you. The terms of the lease have not changed. Uh, it is an extension of that lease. It, it's a 10-year extension of that lease. Um, we've met with the Arts Council. They have invested some money in that and that as the lease expires, they want to be sure that they have a lease long enough to allow them to sort of amortize the investment that they put in there. And so this has uh been advertised, it's followed all the procedural things and it's before you for approval. Uh, if you have questions, I'll answer them. Dustin's here and I think there's representatives from the Arts Council here as well.
Um, I've done a little bit of research on this as far as, I, I, I like the way the, the, the thing is. I just want it to be known that the actual commercial lease on this, on the building uh compared to what the, the nationwide and also statewide uh lease is for retail spaces under the square footage. And under that proposed, it would be $11,000 a month rent on that building. So I just want to make that aware, especially with the Arts Council. Uh, that's a gift as opposed to what this lease is.
Sure, yeah.
How much is the lease, a dollar a year, isn't it?
Lease is without, yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna, I wonder if they were gonna, willing to renegotiate. Probably, probably not.
I, I wasn't asking for that. I was wanting to get it.
No, I know.
He wasn't asking.
Why'd you ruin it for me?
It's a deal.
Anyone else have any uh concerns over the uh lease? Then I need a motion to adopt the resolution approving the lease agreement for a period of 10 years.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that brings us to item uh 15 on the agenda. Uh, this is the approval of a purchase contract. Um, over the last months or so, we've been working with uh the property, him and our properties that owns a lot beside the new youth center uh there in Manio. Um, we worked with him to try to come up with a fair price. I've worked with Jose to make sure we weren't exceeding fair market value. And we've reached an agreement, if you all approve it, where they would sell us that parcel there for $185,000. Um, the parcel, if we were able to acquire and close on it, if you approve it, would be used to add to the space there. Uh, it could be used for a playground, it could be used for open space, it could be used for future parking, it could be used for future growth. Uh, if you've been on that site, it's very nice. Uh, the new building is nice, but it's a very tight site. And this will again, give us some, some breathing space and some future potential there. So uh, it's before you, uh, there's a due diligence period in there. So during the due diligence period, as we look at the property, we have the right to terminate this uh for any reason or no reason. If we decide not to buy it because some reason we don't want it. Uh, but if we do move forward with it, then we would buy it for that price. Um, you need to authorize us, the chairman, to, to sign the contract and al, also authorize us to take the 185,000 out of the fund balance in order to pay for the property. Anything else I need Dave?
As long as he's mentioned that, it, it, we haven't reported to you yet. We're still drafting financial statements, but when Bobby says general fund fund balance, you had planned to use in fiscal '24, $9 million of, if the budget was perfect, of the general fund unassigned fund balance. You're actually going to increase that number? Um, it was a couple of revenues that were way over budget, but the majority of it were salary infringes under budget for the whole general fund. Um, so the number is at the end of June of '24 is 11 million that's available.
So what he's telling you is, is there's $11 million in excess of our 25%. Is that what, is that what our number is of our 25%? Fund balance that is available to us. And each of these properties, as we go forward, there's three on here, would be paid for using that, what I'll call excess fund balance.
Right.
That's available to us.
Okay, is there a motion to um, uh, purchase the contract and authorize the county manager to execute the budget amendment?
So moved.
Same.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House and uh Bassnight, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous. I don't know if you've been out there, but it really, really looks nice.
It does, yes, it's wonderful project.
The, the privacy fence that just went up on the other side of the stormwater, that, did we, we did that, right?
Yes.
Did we did that Dustin? I thought so, yeah. Looks nice, it really does look nice.
All right, um, that brings us to item 16. This is another purchase contract. Um, I don't know how long ago, uh, let's see, what was it, 2019? We moved some, so, we attempted to move some social workers, environmental health, uh, part of our planning department and others into the building that we own there at Nag's Head in the complex where Stan White Realty is. We own one of those condo buildings in there. Um, what we found over time is that the growth of those services on the beach has exceeded the space um that we have in those buildings. Um, Sheila gave me some statistics, about 48% um of their clinical patients that they see in the health department are from the beach. About 40% are in Manio. Uh, we're only able to see about 25% of that 48% uh at the beach because we don't have space to put the clinicians in to do the things that we need to do there. Um, we had intended to.
What are the primary things we're seeing these folks for Sheila? And again, I'm not trying to grill you here, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of what that service is being provided over in that facility.
Sure, so the current space that Bobby's referencing and Nag said, uh, we provide clinical services. So that's um, uh, well child, well child visits, prenatal visits, um, could be STD visits, adult health visits. So we have, um, we can only run one provider, so either an M or advanced level practitioner um at a time with two nurses because of the space, because we only have three exam rooms.
Okay, thank you.
So what we had intended to do, the growth has prevented us from doing, and that is trying to provide services on the beach, trying to provide service on Roanoke Island. And we provide the same services in our Frisco office down uh on Hatteras. And so we haven't been able, we've had to move clinicians back over to Manio because we just don't have anywhere to put them. Uh, we have our environmental health folks out there. Noah has some planning staff out there. We have some social services, or we want to have some social services staff out there. And we're not able to do the things that we wanted to do for space needs because of the growth. And then on top of that, it's created parking problems because again, the need is greater than the facility and therefore more people are coming than the facility is designed for. And you now have parking problems on top of that. Um, we have our WIC program that logically needs to be moved over there too. If you have your social services and your health park there, you need your WIC program in the same building because you're seeing some of the same clientele. So they don't have to go traipsing all over the county to get services. It would be a one-stop shop. With all that said, um, Charlie Davidson uh owns the property condo right next door to it where he operated his medical practice for years. Um, fortuitously, he came to me and asked me, were we interested in, in buying it? And having had these conversations with Sheila, immediately I thought, well, yeah, we, we might be willing to buy because we do have a need. And so he and I have worked through and have developed the contract that's in front of you. Um, the, if you all approve it, then it would go back to him for approval. The purchase price is the price that we took the tax value. And Jose did the guesstimate on what the revow is going to do to it. So that's close to right in terms of a fair market, that's the best number that we have. Uh, it too has a due diligence period in it that we can terminate the contract at any time for any reason or no reason. Um, he has three tenants in it. Some of the space is space that he uses, will be available to us immediately. There's other space in there that he has tenants in. We're going to take it subject to and have to honor those leases until the end of the leases. I, I haven't seen the leases yet, but in our due diligence period, we'll get the leases. And if we don't like them, then we don't have to buy it. If we do, if we're okay, if the terms are short enough where we can, you know, get control of the whole facility in the short term, then, then fine, then, then we'll have something that we can move forward. So that's a decision that'll come to you once we get the leases and I'll come back to you with that. Um, one of the leases is a law firm, a small law firm. One of the leases is.
Oh hell, it's just a bunch of lawyers.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, one of them is, is a dentist and I understand he's building a new office. And so that, and then, and then the Outer Banks Hospital has some space in there. And we'd have to talk to them about what we would do timing wise, how that fits with what Sheila's plans are going to be. We, we, um, how big is the building you're asking me? I think it's.
Do we know the square footage Sheila?
6,000 square feet, it's two stories and it's long.
I, I know where it is, I can kind of picture it in my mind, I just wasn't sure of the total size of it.
At the point where we have the control of the whole building.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
It's going to really augment what they do. The, the clinical space is already there because it's had been a medical facility. Um, and since a lot of things we can do that'll help, it'll also help Noah tremendously because it'll free up space in the other building for the planning stuff that we've been doing as well as the environmental health stuff that is in that building as well.
And good news, bad news, we got bigger space, a lot more sick people to take care of.
Well, it's, it's a, it'll have a campus feel to it. And there's also uh going to alleviate some of the safety concerns there. I mean, it's just a cluster.
Yeah, it'll, it'll solve, hopefully solve some of our parking concerns. So that's before you for approval. Um, and then we'll do our due diligence and come back if there's any issues.
Sounds good, pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve, yeah, go ahead.
Motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Ross and Bateman, is there a second?
I'm sorry, before you do that, you also need to authorize me to take the funds out of the fund balance to pay this purchase price.
Maker of motion, agree?
I agree.
Is there a second to the motions?
Second.
Uh, second is Commissioner Bassnight, all those in favor? Floor is open for further discussion.
Sorry, he jumped the gun. I jumped the gun with him.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.
And then the last of these three is the Dare Building Supply property uh down in Rodanthe. Um, uh, we talked about the need for an EMS station down there. And we've been looking for a while for property. We had talked to the owner of this property a couple of years ago. And he wanted to do a ground lease and we weren't interested in doing a ground lease. Um, he came back to us several months ago and said he would be willing to now sell. Uh, once again, we ran the value up flag with Jose to be sure that we were in the, in the ballpark uh with the value. Um, and that value is uh 2.1 million for that property. Um, we've had Oakley Collier do some preliminary sketches to be sure that what we would want to do there would fit on the property and preliminarily it will. Uh, once again, we have a long due diligence period. We can look at it, we can get up the Collier, look at it, we can make sure that it'll fit and do what we want to do on it before we have to close on it. If we find that we have any problems, then once again, we can terminate for uh any reason or no reason um moving forward.
Just want to throw in a couple of things if I could, Mr. Chairman. That's a, that's five and a half, almost five and a half acres and it's high ground. There is a borrow pit in the middle of it, but it's a, it just adds to the aesthetic value of it. Uh, it's a lot of land there. We're going to, we're going to have a, be able to make good use of the, of future needs there on that property. It can have multi, not just EMS, but there are probably some other opportunities going forward.
Sure. Thank you Commissioner.
All right, make a motion to approve.
Motion on the floor to approve, seconded by Couch.
Yeah, Couch. And, and allow me to go to the fund balance.
Yes, yes, yes.
Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous.
All right, that brings us to item 18. This is amendments to the capital project ordinance for EMS uh phase one, uh the series 2023A LOBs and budget savings. And Dave's here for that presentation.
Thank you. Um, this will um, just about close out the phase one projects. Everything's not final. We've still got stoplights at Killable Hills and um HVAC and Dare Med Flight. Um, so a little retainers still payout, so it'll probably be back, but it'll be very small numbers. So what we're doing is asking you to use budget savings and interest income from phase one toward phase three, which is the Nag's Head, um, really the Nag's Head EMS project, but we're also doing public works. So we'll reduce the amount of money where we plan to borrow for phase three. Um, we had um, interest income, our total was um 256,000 over budget. Uh, we've already used 125 of that for phase two. Um, that number's pretty much final. So we're going to add another 131,760 um and use it for uh phase three. Um, the projects right now, and this will be very close, are $1,498,000 under budget on the expense side.
How's that possible Dave?
Well, that's why I put the section down further down. If you look at those three projects, the Southern Shores EMS, Dare Med Flight, Killable Hills EMS and Fire, comes out at about just over 3% per project. Um, 325,000 on Southern Shores, 294,000 on Med Flight, and 846,000 on Kill Hills, which is a big number, but it's 3.37%, which is pretty reasonable for an overall project.
I'm wondering how that's possible. I'm trying to figure out the last project that I heard came in under budget. Danny, you were in grade school, so how does that happen?
Um, honestly that's.
Where's Dustin?
That's why we do see him at risk.
How's that possible Dustin? I mean, I'm fantastically impressed, I'm just wondering how do we do that some more?
Well, two or three things you got going for you.
What?
Uh, one is you've got an incentive in the contract for them to.
Yes.
To save money. Uh, there's a shared cost and we get most of the savings. Um, second, you got Dustin riding herd.
That's why I asked him to come step up here and tell me about it.
And you got Dave riding herd. And so the projects are, are well managed. And I'll just give up Barn Hill credit, they do a really good job.
That's what I'm saying, guys, this is a big story and I'm appreciative of it really.
When you do construction management at risk, you're looking at qualifications and past performance. That's a big reason why you do it. And a good example is one that's going on right now is Men's Harbor with the extension of those firebays. The original plan was to do that at the end and it would have taken the project three months more than it would have. Barn Hill figured out a way to do it and it's almost done. Uh, last Thursday, I think the only thing they had left was door installation.
Yeah, I've seen, I was out there for the.
Um, but that, that knocked three months off the project and that's going to save us three months of general condition.
Again, more, it's a great testament to what they're doing, the work they do. And our, our recommendation for them as construction manager at risk is we approved just earlier. So I'm thrilled to hear it Dave, it's just, it's such a rare thing, thank you.
Okay, so between the two items, it's 555,717 dollars. And we're asking you to take that out of phase one and use it for phase three toward what you've already budgeted for the land acquisition uh for the Nag's Head EMS station. So that'll reduce the amount for phase three that we have to borrow by that same amount. And um, we're asking you to do that by approving an amendment to the series 23 LOBs Capital Project Ordinance and amendment to the series 25 uh LOBs Capital Project Ordinance.
Move to adopt the amendments.
There's a motion on the floor, Commissioner House to adopt the amendments as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, you have the approval amendments from October 7th. You have the tax collector's report. You have the establishment of revenue expense accounts for workshops for soil and water, and you have the NCDEQ beach access grant and budget amendment.
Motion to approve.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve as presented. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. You only have one. It's the Rodanthe Wage Salvo Board, the terms of Jason Haywick and Roberta Midget both expire this month, and they would both like to be reappointed.
Move to appoint, please.
You beat me to the punch.
It's all right, it's all right.
Well, you've already made the motion there.
We're on the same page.
Okay, is a motion on the floor to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is a second. Floor is open for further discussion. I didn't want to table this again, but I've not had an opportunity to get those parties together. I think y'all have seen letters that's been sent out with some controversy amongst the board members and past and formal, but I was hoping to maybe have somebody sit down and be a litigator between them to see what's going on, but we're past that now, so.
We've not heard anything back, Danny. You would be a man on the ground.
And Mary Helen and Aida both are here, but they've got a new president there that is a bit of a peacemaker. So I think, I think we're going to see. That's not to take anything away from the need for them to continue to communicate with us, but they're making steps. They realize-
All right, good. I'm glad to hear that. Okay. All right. With that being said, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous.
In your upcoming board and committee appointments, in December, you have the Equalization and Review Board with five terms expiring. You have the Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Committee with three terms expiring. You have the Tourism Board with six terms expiring. In January, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with one term expiring. The Older Adult Services Advisory Council with one term expiring. The Working Waterman Commission with two terms expiring. In February 2025, you have the Aging Advisory Council with two terms expiring. The Planning Board with two terms expiring. And the Senior Tar Heel Legislature Deligus with two terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 21, which is Commissioner's business and managers' and attorneys' business. Do you have anything else, Bobby?
I just have one update, just to let you know what we're doing. In the Water Department, we've had a number of meetings with William over there, looking at his structure of the organization, how he's got things. And we've got to a place, we think we can save some money and save some personnel costs over time by reorganizing the way. And we're sort of going to eliminate a middle management tier over, with attrition over time, and fold those into some supervisors. We can have one supervisor looking over multiple plants rather than having a supervisor at every plant. And so he's going to make some, some changes there. Nobody's getting fired, nobody's getting moved, none of that stuff is happening. It's all going to be done through attrition. But over about four years of when everything falls in place, there's going to be roughly $100,000 savings in the water fund from not having sort of a bloated management structure there. So just to let you know that's happening. And then I understand you need a closed session at the appropriate time.
Okay. We get through this and we'll make that motion at that end. Public information officer, Mr. Sester, you have anything else? Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else? All right, that brings us to Commissioner business. And I would, I'm going to bounce around a little bit here this, this morning. Commissioner Bateman, would, would you kick that off for us?
Yeah, well, you know, I feel a little sad. And, you know, we're departure of three of our, our board members. And I just want to say that what we have here and what we have had here in the past is very special. To step up to the plate and to serve, take the phone calls, to the abuse that comes along with the job, the countless times on the street, riding, back and forth to meetings. People don't understand all the amount of time it takes to be a county commissioner. Well, I want to be the county commissioner. It's a great job, whatever. I've been here three years. That ain't how it works. You got, first of all, you got to have experience. I mean, don't just step up to the plate and decide, do you want to be something because it looks good? You got to pay your dues, you got to work hard. And everybody on this board has done that. And it's really important that we come out and we, we know what we're doing when we get in the position. You guys have done that. B, you know, with the Board of Education, Danny Board of Education, and then as the county commissioners, and you serve. You suit up, you show up, and you serve, and you do it with class. That's what this job is about. And I'm going to miss both of you guys really big. I'm going to tell a story on Wally. Me and Wally serve, and we have the same passion for drug abuse, alcoholism. I was running for election, and I called Wally up and asked him, I'd like to sit and talk to you. I was running as a Democrat. Everybody knows Wally's a Republican. So anyway, he came over to the Sugar Shop, we sat down, we had lunch. And Wally looked at me, but he wasn't really giving me eye contact. You know what I mean? It was like, you know, he was there, but he weren't really there. And I started outlining some visions that I had for substance abuse, alcoholism, the dare challenge, recovery court, saving lives task force, and things that he was passionate about. And at the end of that meeting, I knew very well that Wally even was not going to vote for me. But I had his heart. I had the guy's heart because one, a couple of times, he kind of teared up on me because he cares about people, and that's what takes on this job. You have to care about people. You have to, as I said again, once again, suit up, show up, and do the job. And I'm going to miss you guys. I'm going to miss Wally. And like I said, I'm a little bit sad, but I'm excited about the future that the board coming up and what we're going to have. I'm excited for Danny and B, what y'all going to do in the future. And well as for Wally, you know, he's tough as a damn bit of nails. So all of a sudden, he's going to just pop up and be there again. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Urban. Well said. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to run not quite as long as you, but close. I want to give everybody an update on Ms. Katie and the dredging processes that we've been going through. The Oregon Antifa Task Force had asked the Army Corps, was asked by the Army Corps on which permit to open first. It was deemed by the task force at the time to open up the Oregon Antifa permit, which outlays the bar, the alternate channel, and Old House Channel. Surveys were done, the dredging plan was submitted. On October 11th, the Army Corps advised the county they were submitting a proposal out to bid of a pipeline dredge project using federal funds in which had been set aside for over two years. Part of that pipeline dredge contained Old House Channel and the alternate channel. The Corps would not want any dredging in those areas until a pipeline dredge project was awarded. At that time, the bar was in decent shape and only had about a load to be taken out. So the Oregon Antifa Task Force opted to open Walter Slough in the crack where there was much more material in those channels that needed to be cleared. Surveys were completed, dredge plans were in place, and Ms. Katie went to work on October 19th. The National Park Service also opened their permit to dredge the Walter Slough Channel heading into the Oregon Antifa Fishing Center, which is under the North Carolina Park Service control. On October 21st, a survey was completed on the bar and found a significant buildup of sand from the offshore storms. The task force asked the Army Corps of the possibility to open the permit with restriction to only operate on the bar. The Army Corps agreed, and the surveys and dredge plans were submitted on October 24th. And on November 1st, this past Friday, the Army Corps opened that one as well. Operationally, since Ms. Katie has been dredging, has been back dredging, our third-party monitoring system has found zero violations. Also, the dredge management control system onboard the Ms. Katie is so far advanced that the DQM consultants have now found a way to program the system that if the drag heads are within six inches of the allowable depth or side of the dredge box, it will shut the pumps off automatically. While under dredging operations, this additional safeguard is beyond the Corps' expectations. So that's your update on Ms. Katie and what she's doing right now. Commissioner B. Bassnight. It has been a pure pleasure serving with you on this board. I look forward to working with you on other projects that may arise because I know in my heart, you will continue to serve the public and our students. And I thank you for working with me. Commissioner Couch. We came on this board at the same time, kind of like a Commissioner brother. Your commitment and dedication to Hatteras Island is immeasurable. Your insights to the island have helped a great deal in the direction and decisions we have made to benefit Hatteras Island. And I thank you, my friend. Vice Chairman Oberman. I know you're watching, and I'm saddened by the fact that you could not be with us today. My prayers are with you and a complete recovery. We will miss your various witty remarks and humor you would bring. I look forward to working with you continued on the Savings Last Task Force, and get well soon, my friend. And we can't wait for you to get back to Dare County. To completely fulfill a campaign promise that I made to a small group of high school students during the 2020 election, the topic was knowing your history, good and bad, so that we may move forward. I promised them that during this term in office, I would present a day in history and that it was up to them to research it. I am pleased to say that over this term, I have heard back from several of them. To fulfill this promise, on this day in 1845, the first nationally observed uniform election day was held in the United States. How were elections done in the U.S. before that time? Do the research. And now for the best part of any of our commissioners meeting, meet Kimber.
Our pet of the week this week is Kimber. Kimber is a four-month-old spade Cory Tabby, and she is ready to bring joy into your home. With her laid-back personality and silky smooth fur, she adores cuddling in your arms and soaking up all the affection. Kimber is full of energy and enjoys exercising on her running arm, plus loves engaging in playtime with friendly, friendly animals. To adopt Kimber or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
With that cute little face, how could you not want to go over to the SPCA and give Kimber a forever home? Remember, tomorrow is Election Day. If you have not already voted, please get out to the polls, be active in your government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Commissioner Ross?
I could just echo what, Mr. Chairman, you opened the meeting with, or Steve, the comments, appreciation, accolades, the Danny. 100% on board. I'm going to miss you both a lot. Fabulous members of the board. And you think about all of the ranker and vitriol you hear at the national level. We've got Danny, lifelong Democrat. Most of us Republicans are recently switching parties, and we don't have any of that. We don't have any of it. And I just wish there was a heck of a lot more, so. And I know B, you did as well. You switched, but again, it just doesn't exist here, which is a blessing, and I'm very grateful to you both. So you will definitely be missed. Couple of other things, real quick. Starting today, everyone pay attention, is Green Light Week, right? Everybody knows what that is?
Yep.
Poster green light. Outside the home, honoring our veterans. Next week, the 11th, is Veterans Day. For those interested, this afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 in Doughty Park, a nonpartisan, nonpolitical day of prayer is going to be held from 4:00 to 6:00. Everyone's invited. Bring a long chair, wear a jacket. On the 21st, everybody hear about Blue Zones? Heard about what a great county we are and how engaged and active the Parks and Rec Survey said? Well, there are the power nine. I won't go through all nine, but there will be a quiz after the meeting, Mary Helen. What are the power nine of the Blue Zones Initiative? So on the 21st, I'm pointing this out, from 5:00 to 7:00, a very thorough assessment evaluation of Dare County has been conducted by the Blue Zones Consulting Group. And they will be presenting those findings at Jeanette's Pier. So for those interested, live longer, live healthier. Jeanette's Pier, November 21st at 5:00 P.M. And that concludes my remarks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Ross. B, Commissioner Bassnight?
Thank you, Chairman Woodard, and thank you for those much appreciated remarks, kind remarks at the beginning. It has been an honor for me to serve the people of Dare County. It was an honor to be appointed by this board, to serve in this seat, and I have enjoyed every single minute with all the complaints and all the good things that have come about. It's, it's truly been an honor. We have so many wonderful people in leadership. Danny, you could be missed a lot. You and I go back to the Port of Ed, and we've worked well together, and I think we've worked well together this year, too. Wally, my prayers go out to you. We're hoping for a very quick recovery and getting back to Dare County and staying involved, which is I plan to do. Stay involved. Y'all aren't through with me yet. I've got a lot of boards I want to be on. And I hoped when I was appointed that in some small way I could make a difference, and I, I feel like I have. So I'm very, very pleased with this past year. I want to say that Dare County is extremely fortunate to have the leadership they have. You look up here at this board, this administrative group, it's the best of the best. I just see it every single day. Of course, I worked with them when I was on the Port of Ed, and we worked well together. They always supported our schools, and for that, I am deeply grateful. But in working inside with them for this past year, I see their dedication every single day, the work they do for our people in Dare County every single day. And I just feel like they just spend a tremendous amount of time serving the people of Dare County. They're compassionate, they're dedicated, they're committed, and they're smart, pretty knowledgeable in what they do. I want to say, well, when I was a teacher, I had a list on my desk of 100 ways to say awesome or great work. And I wish I had that list today because every single one of those 100 words would apply to these folks sitting up here. They're that good. And it's my deepest honor to have served with you. I appreciate your help, your acceptance of me for considering me one of the guys. I appreciate that. Bobby, I appreciate your help. You are the most knowledgeable person that I've seen in that position because we go to a meeting and somebody asks a question, you know the answer. So you've been a big help to me, and I appreciate all you've done. This is an amazing team. The leadership you're sitting up here, you see sitting up here today is just absolutely exceptional. And so thank you all for your help. Thank you for, to the people of Dare County for supporting me in this past year and reaching out to me, and I've tried to really do my best for you. So thanks so much.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, B.
Appreciate it. Certainly last but not least, Commissioner Couch.
And B. And B, I gotta admit, one of the first things I thought about was, I know some handful of nieces and nephews are gonna just be ecstatic to have more access to you.
You got it. They begged me not to take the appointment.
I will confess that I got caught singing coming down the hall to the meeting here, and one of the custodial staff here just gave me a big smile, and I was like, is it that obvious? And the only reason that, it's just, I'm looking forward to, Bob, you were so good to recognize that even before the Board of Education, when they were moving the lighthouse and going way back, you know, when you spend all the years, and I just admire the years that you've done this, because I know way back before the eighties and everything, where you were involved with the J.C.'s and stuff, you really gotta have some inner desire to want to serve people. And if you keep that in the forefront, then everything else will take care of itself. Rob, others, you know, Wally, I love Wally. I appreciate his knowledge of North Carolinian, and he's got the same twisted sense of humor that I do and others do on the board here, but I'm really gonna miss him as well. But I'll have some access. I see him down at the Hatters every now and then. We know a lot of the same people. But I just, rather than going on and on here, I want to thank the county employees from top to bottom, and Bobby, that includes you, I mean, right on down. The mandate back in two thousand sixteen and in two thousand twenty as well was to streamline government. And we've been, we've asked our guys to do more with less, and they have met the challenge, and they've got the job done. I just live in awe of all the work that our guys are doing. And Dustin, I see Dustin here, Charlie, Spencer, and there's so many people, Noah, the department heads, but right on down through the guys that are working hard, because they've got good leadership. And I just thank you from the bottom of my heart, county personnel, for all that you do for us, and appreciate your good attitudes. And I have had some thank you calls, which I really appreciate. Some other calls in there, too, but we're not gonna talk about that. But, you know, I thank you for your thank yous, and just a couple of things really quickly, so I can shut up here, it's a hard thing to do. This board gave a proclamation to the postmistress down there, and it's a hard thing to keep a secret on that island, you know, it just, but they managed to do it. And when Donna Parker came into the post office, because they managed to come up with a scheme to get her in there, but the sitting postmaster, now that she's taken sick leave, this lady had over three thousand hours of sick leave that she never took, and somebody said to her, just be prepared to have your picture taken, and that was the only tip-off that she had. So I'm really amazed that they were to keep their mouth shut down there and surprised the daylights out of her. The FUD site, I got Brian in here and others. Brian, I hope you get on the Soil Board. I think you can do a lot of good work down there. But here's one thing that I will leave you with. On that FUD site, this has not been the ground swell on this board, and we came at them like pit bulls, because they needed it. They needed for us to chomp down without sinking our teeth, which is what we did. But in the consent agenda, you'll see where, it's about a four hundred thousand, we have a joint use agreement, Bobby and his staff and the Outer Banks Forever folks. Here's the point on that. This was never about sticking it to the government. This was about getting a world-class beach down there reinstated, and now we're gonna have recreational facilities there. We're gonna have restroom facilities in the shadow of one of the top three maritime landmarks in this country. That's what drove this, was to get that beach back into shape so that we can continue to say that our beaches are world-class. And I love everybody on this board. Appreciate you so much. I will say, and everybody up here knows it now, this is a lot of political experience in here. This job is not what you think it is, and it's the hardest thing I've ever done, and but you continue to grow, and you end up with some gray hair. I ain't gonna miss the stress, and that's on me. I've done a bad job of managing that, but when you give a rip, sometimes you, you know, you're gonna be prepared to be stressed. And I'm looking forward to losing a little bit of weight, getting a grip on my health, and I love you all, and I appreciate you. I give the credit and glory to God. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. I've got a couple more things before we ask for a closed session. Go back to my early comments about the rain garden at Manio Middle School. You know, the replacement of that little walkway there is like thirty-seven hundred dollars and some change. I'd like to make a motion that we take care of paying for that new walkway out of our contingency fund. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor by myself has been seconded by Commissioner House and Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm really.
Two things. Can you give me that number again?
It's thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven hundred dollars and some change. I got the exact change.
And do you have a contact?
Yeah.
We'll get that for you.
Yeah, I'll give it to you. The, as Commissioner House has said, tomorrow is a big day in our nation. I commend the citizens of Dare County stepping up to the plate, early voting. There's been some record numbers. Please exercise your right to vote tomorrow. Brian, I hope that works well for you. We've got a luncheon this afternoon in honor of B and Danny and Wally, and then we've got the National Day of Prayer at four. Brian, if you'd be so kind to give our regrets this evening, I know there's a meeting at seven, and I'm not sure we'll be finished here for this National Day of Prayer in order to drive down to be there. So if you'd certainly give our regrets to not being able to attend that ordinarily, we'd be there, and I hope you folks understand that. And then certainly, last but not least, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have three unbelievable human beings that have given their heart and soul to this county, and God bless y'all. So with that being said, County Manager, would you like to make that motion, not motion, but that?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, you need a motion pursuant to NCGS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A six, to review the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
Okay, is a motion to go into closed session. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. I'm gonna call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order. I'll turn it over to the County Manager.
Sir, in the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session and reviewed the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, and took no other action.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to the close of our November fourth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. I need a motion to adjourn until nine A.M. on December the second.
Danny, would you give us that motion, please, for your last meeting?
Yes. I move that we get out of here.
And I second it.
I second it.
Okay, is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
My brothers. Thank you.